Try that again. Good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the public meeting notice dated November 12, 2020, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements.
Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Hairston.
Here.
Ms. Little.
Here.
Mr. Naidoo.
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Vartan.
President.
President Fox.
Here.
Okay, and now if everyone would like to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty. And justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
Yes. A closed session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HGTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. This meeting is also streaming live through YouTube. To view this meeting via YouTube, please visit the city's website at cityofsummit.org and click on the YouTube icon at the top of the homepage. While this council meeting is being broadcast live and members of the governing body are participating remotely, steps have been put in place to accommodate public input during this meeting through public notice dated November 12, 2020, which provided information for those wishing to participate during public comment periods at this council meeting. The City Clerk's Office also provided through public notice instructions on how the public could submit a question or comment via email or regular first-class mail in advance of the meeting. Public comment will be permitted at specified times as outlined in the agenda. Please refrain from commenting until solicited by the council president. For those members of the public who wish to make a comment during a designated public comment period, please use the raise hand feature and you'll be called upon by the council president. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Lastly, we ask that all participants remain on mute unless called upon to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now on to minutes for approval. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of regular enclosed session of November 4?
No moves.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain, abstain? Oh, no, yeah, abstain, because I wasn't here last time.
Of course. Okay, so the motion carries, and now we're moving on to reports. Madam Mayor, it's time for your report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. So a little bit of general election information. So there are 17,095 registered voters in Summit, and unofficially, there were 13,076 votes cast by Summit residents. That is 76% turnout, which is an amazing turnout. I am very proud of the many Summit residents who voted in this year's election. The Union County Board of Elections will certify election results for Summit and the entirety of Union County on November 20. We eagerly await final tallies of our local, state, and national elections. 76% is a lot to be proud of, so I'm very proud of our residents. Our COVID-19 numbers in Summit keep increasing, and on Saturday, New Jersey saw the largest one-day increase in positive cases since the start of the pandemic. To control the spread of coronavirus, it is essential to implement a combination of preventative measures that includes wearing a mask, keeping a safe social distance from others when in public, not inviting non-family members into your home or going into theirs, answering calls from contact tracers, and getting tested. By establishing several lines of defense against the virus, we put ourselves in a better position to avoid contracting it. And lastly, the Westfield Regional Health Department and the City of Summit are advising any person spending time in the bar area at Roots in Summit between November 3 and November 12 to obtain a COVID-19 antigen test. If dining in another part of the restaurant or outdoors, patrons are advised to consult a physician. Harvest Restaurant Group has confirmed that multiple employees working as bartenders at Roots in Summit have tested positive for the COVID-19 coronavirus. The restaurant temporarily closed on November 12 and will voluntarily remain closed for a minimum of two weeks. And that's all I have, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now on to Michael Rogers for the City Administrator's report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. It is time for residents and downtown employees to renew annual parking permits online. The deadline for residents to renew annual parking and municipal disposal center permits has been extended to November 30. The deadline for downtown employees to renew parking permits is December 30. Please go to cityofsummit.org/parking for a link to online registration or for more information. And all cities will be, all city offices will be closed on Thursday, November 26, and Friday, November 27, in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. There will also be a parking holiday with no fees required on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday for on-street parking or for parking in municipal lots and garages. And although parking is free in downtown Summit, time limits will be strictly enforced. The transfer station will also be closed on Thanksgiving Day and will reopen on Friday, November 27, from 7:30 a.m. to 3:45 p.m. If your household trash collection is Thursday, your trash will be picked up on Thanksgiving. Citywide curbside recycling has been rescheduled to Friday, November 27. Please have items at the curb by 6 a.m. Everyone, please stay healthy and safe, and try to find something to be thankful for next week. I personally would like to thank Governor Murphy for placing restrictions on the number of family members that will be in my house next week, so thank you, Governor. No joke, please try to, we have a lot to be thankful for despite everything that's been going on this year, so try to take a moment with the family members you are able to gather up. And that's all I have for this evening. Council President, thank you.
Thank you. And now on to the Council President's report. There have been questions from residents who do not own a smartphone about free testing sites. The state of New Jersey has free resources for residents to locate coronavirus testing centers. The site loader can be found nine dot gov. Additionally, these such as CVS and Walgreens are providing free testing. These sites do not require individuals to have a smartphone to receive test results. The information is also available on the city website at cityofsummit.org/coronavirus. Earlier today, Governor Murphy signed an executive order retightening restrictions on gatherings to help stop the spread of COVID-19. Effective tomorrow, indoor gatherings are limited to a maximum of 10 people, and effective November 23, outdoor gatherings are limited to a maximum of 150 people. Indoor gatherings such as religious services or celebrations, political events, weddings, funerals, or memorial services and performances may continue under the current rules but are limited to 25% of room capacity, up to 150 people. And please, please continue to wear masks and social distance. We're going back into a very bad period with rising cases, so it's important, if we want to keep restaurants and stores and schools and all the things that we want to stay open, we have to all act. So with that, we'll move on now to presentations. So this evening, we have the Parkline Foundation and John Rushki from Mott McDonald. I believe that Frank Messiosi wanted to do a brief introduction. He had requested that.
Just give me a moment, Council President. I'll add him to the co-hosts, to the panelists.
I'll just explain that what we're doing tonight. The Parkline Foundation did a presentation in July of 2019 at a council meeting, and council and members of the public at that time had a number of questions. We organized those questions into several categories, and that's what's being discussed tonight. So Mott McDonald has been working on addressing some of the engineering concerns and also some of the other questions that were raised at that previous meeting. So with that, I'll turn it over to Frank and John.
Frank, you're muted.
I forgot to unmute. Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Mayor Radist, and ladies and gentlemen of common council. Thank you for the opportunity to present to council on behalf of the Parkline Foundation. I'm here to make an introduction, but in order to do so, I need to provide just a little bit of history for context. You remember that we held a well-attended workshop at the First Aid Squad Building late in 2018. In addition to the presentations, there was an extensive question-and-answer session conducted by Councilman Naidoo. Then in July of 2019, the Parkline Foundation presented to council, as Council President just mentioned. The presentation was extensive, and many questions were answered, but there were five topics for which council members requested additional information. Much of the time since then, since that meeting, has been spent working with the engineers to provide answers. The five that were unanswered involved, one, a comprehensive survey and identification of appropriate access points, two, a drainage plan, three, soil borings, four, screening mockups, and number five, the feasibility of a bridge over Morris Avenue. John Rushki is here to provide answers. John is a principal in the engineering firm of Mott McDonald, which has been retained by the city on a number of occasions, including this one. So now I'll turn it over to John.
Thank you, Frank. I'm just going to share my screen. Okay. All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Just a brief overview of the project. The Summit Parkline Project is representative of a conventional rails-to-trails recreational project. Rails-to-trails is not a unique concept. There are numerous trails throughout New Jersey and, in fact, throughout the entire country. The focus area for the project starts at the end of the existing path that has been constructed up to Morris Avenue, and it extends to Orchard Street in Springfield, adjacent to Bryant Park. The former railroad bed offers a smooth gradual slope for a comfortable walking and biking experience. Three pedestrian bridges are also proposed within the current project limits. The bridges will add a unique experience to view traffic and the roadways at an elevated position. As Frank indicated, detailed survey and engineering assessment has been completed. The engine assessment included, but not limited to, the specific target issues such as designing improvements to manage stormwater generated from the project, layout the proposed bridges over the existing roadways, an environmental assessment of the railroad bed, and screening alternatives where the existing railroad bed is located close to the neighboring areas. I'm just going to start to discuss the general features. Get the screen to, one second. Okay. Just starting off on the project, like I said, it starts off where the path ended near Morris Avenue, and some of the main features of the path is going to be an eight-foot-wide by two minutes pathway. It's going to have bridges in several locations. The first bridge would be located around Morris Avenue, and on Morris Avenue, there'd also be steel steps to access the pathway off of Morris Avenue. The bridge and the path are all going to be eight feet wide. We have another bridge located on Ashwood Avenue, again, eight-foot-wide. We are proposing to have screening along the project, and the screening will be consistent of fencing and landscaping, and I'll discuss that a little bit more detail as we just go through the project. Other features, as we continue down the path, it does cross Russell Place, and there'll be a third bridge that's across over on Russell Place. There'll be another steel stairs to access the path off of Russell Place. And as we continue down the path, it does continue to the Bristol Myers Squibb facility. And at this location, we did, the foundation has been, has had discussions with the property owner, and one of the initial concepts was just to continue the trail along the existing railroad bed, but the property owner does want to entertain, and actually offered to construct a path around the facility. So this is approximately 2,500 feet of the 3,800 feet of the path would be constructed on the Bristol Myers Squibb property. And again, that portion is proposed to be constructed by them. There is a third alternative that was looked at, and basically, instead of continuing towards railroad bed, is you have the stairs off of Russell and then continue the walkway along the existing municipal roadways, and then get to Hidden Valley Park and continue with this. But this is an alternative we don't believe would be something that needs to be pursued. I think working with the property owner with this alternative is what's going to be pursued. Continuing on the path off of the Bristol Myers Squibb, we're basically going to a wooded area. This is a very unique situation going through this area. We did identify, when we're looking at the drainage, that in this area, actually, it's kind of a ravine, where we do identify where we need to construct some drainage swales in this area in order to keep water off of the path. And then continuing on the path, again, in this portion, we're just continuing on the railroad bed. Again, a very interesting walkway along the wooded areas. The end of the path, as I noted, was off of Orchard Street. We are proposing to end the path at that point at this time, but certainly there's opportunity to continue the path over Orchard onto Bryant Park and continue. But we are proposing to have access off the trail, and that would be access, basically, there's an existing right-of-way to Paper Road where we continue to construct the path and then ultimately access it onto local roads where there's a crosswalk sidewalk where you can connect into and get into the park. So the proposed project is complete. It does continue to extend from the park, from Morris, all the way into the park. Certainly, future improvements would enhance having a bridge going across Orchard, but the current project is to limit with the features that are proposed. Other proposed improvements that are associated with the project, we did take public safety into consideration, and we did look at access for emergency responders. Emergency responders will be available to access this path at multiple locations. Call boxes will be installed at multiple locations, and we work closely with the police to identify where those best locations would be. For safety, safety fencing would be installed at all bridge abutments just due to the change in grades. And the pathway would also have markers, not only for identify for emergency sponsor, identify exactly where someone is, but also for the people that are walking it, so they can identify what their walking distance is. And some of the key issues that we've talked about with stormwater control, this would be a linear major development, and the improvements would comply with the state stormwater requirements. For the linear project, we would install basically a gravel trench along the edge of the path to mitigate the stormwater that comes off of the impervious coverage. It's only an eight-foot-wide path, and with that, the path would be sloped towards the gravel trenches, so it was not, we do not, it would be designed so there would not be an increase in both stormwater quantity or any changes in water quality purposes. So another major design consideration was the screening. The screening is a very important component of the path. It'd certainly be respectful of the property owners that are located along the path, certainly in this portion of the project is sensitive. And like I mentioned, the screening is, generally, was proposed to have wood fencing and landscaping, and certainly, a mock setup was installed by the foundation to illustrate exactly what type of, what the screening would look like. Certainly, the foundation is focusing on Henry, because we know there's quite a bit of concerns on this area, but certainly, the foundation will look at any resident who's raising concerns or issues and address, you know, screening and landscaping to protect that privacy from the private property owners. Another major concern is regarding environmental concerns. Environmental concerns related to historic fill are well-known and commonly managed following state regulations. You know, this historic railroad fill is not a unique situation. It's been managed many times. In order to assess the environmental condition or situation that we have, we did take superficial soil samples along the roadway. Background soil samples were also collected at the Hidden Valley and Bryant Parks. The laboratory analysis was based on conventional parameters that are detected from historic railroad bed fill, and they included polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, mouthfuls, known as PAH compounds. It's very common. We sampled for metals and PCBs. There was no PCBs detected throughout the project area. However, we did detect low concentrations of PAH compounds and metals along the railroad bed, and that was expected. That's very common to find those constituents within historic fill. But the levels were not high, and several of the metals detected along the bed were actually at or even below background levels that we had. So basically, the solutions associated with dealing with historic fill is the proper management of them, and management of it is looking at the construction, minimizing the amount of excavation and the amount of soil that's going to be generated, and if soil is generated, it's basically disposed of off-site in accordance with state regulations. So one of the other topics to touch on is the bridges. The bridges are a key, the bridges are basically a very key feature of the improvements. Basically, the bridge on Morris Avenue, it is proposed to be an arch bridge. All the bridges will meet DOT and federal requirements for standard design parameters. We are proposing pre-engineered steel bridges with six-foot-high fencing. And like I said, on Morris Avenue, it'll be arched on the other two bridges, on Ashwood and Russell. Basically, it'd be a flat elevation because we have the existing steel trusses underneath, and we don't want to remove them, we don't want to modify them, so we're going to be building over those and just having the bridges more of a level elevation. Certainly, these, we're looking at pre-engineered bridges. We can start to look at if we want to customize them at all, if we want to have signage or anything, but at this point, we're just looking at the conventional standard bridges. The bridges would be elevated. The bridges on Ashwood and Russell are very elevated, no concerns. Certainly, we're going to be above the existing steel trusses, but on Morris Avenue, we are going to have the bridge clearance of a minimum of 16 feet, would be unrestricted travel on the roadways. And in order to accomplish that, we do have to do some modifications to the concrete abutment, but the overall clearance will be 16 feet. And then, as I did mention, there will be stairs. Well, this is a photo, just to illustrate, you know, a typical bridge section that we have. We have the fencing, we have some handrails and the typical decking. These aren't exactly, these are just stock photos, but it generally gives the, you know, general configuration or concept that's proposed and what the bridges, these pre-engineered bridges typically look like. And then I also mentioned the stairs. The stairs would have steel stairs. The design of the stairs would complement the design of the bridges, so they would look uniform, and basically, but will be very similar in construction of what you see here. It's very, very common. And that's all I have for general overview. Take any questions?
So why don't I open it up first of all to questions from council members, and then we'll go on to questions from the public. So are there any members of council that have questions? Right.
Council President.
I can't see everyone right now. Okay, you'll have to use the raise hand feature, but go ahead, Mayor.
I don't have a raise hand feature. Anyway, so I have one question.
I can't.
As you probably know, Bristol Myers Squibb has placed that property up for sale, and it is my understanding that they do not want to commit the next owner to doing this type of work on that property, because BMS presumably will not be, doesn't want to own it anymore, obviously. So what's the backup plan if the new owner says, sorry, we don't want to have this built the way you've got it designed right now?
I can just go back to the slide that we've had. I think working, anything that's going to be redeveloped in this area is going to be going through, I presume, a redevelopment plan and coordinating with the planning board. So certainly, through those mechanisms, you know, the discussion of the past could be entertained through that proposed development. The foundation has been discussing with Bristol Myers Squibb, and Frank can perhaps elaborate a little bit more regarding their discussions, but they did seem to still be having a commitment to make the path around the overall development. And like I said, the complete fallback is to only install the path up to Russell and then have basically a travel path along the municipal right-of-ways, and then pick up the trail again on Bryant, Hidden Valley Park, and then through the county land here, we can continue on the county and then tie into the railroad bed again.
Okay. I mean, I do think that you can't make the assumption that the new owner is willing to entertain this at all. We have no idea what they want to do with that property, whoever that company may be when they buy it. So.
Very good point, absolutely. Frank, why don't you just elaborate a little bit further?
Yeah. Actually, Jay Brinkerhoff, who's also a trustee, was supposed to be on this call for this kind of elaboration, but essentially, BMS can't commit the future buyer, obviously. But the workaround is through Michigan Avenue and then back on to the Parkline. So we can actually, it's imperfect, but we can actually connect all the way to Bryant Park in that manner, even if the new owner would not cooperate.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Marjorie, I know you can't see hands, and I don't have a.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm sorry to interrupt. I didn't know how else. Can I follow up, one on the mayor's point and just get a clarification, and then I have a separate question that I would like you, John, to elaborate on. As currently, it's my understanding, tell me whether I'm wrong, but the accommodation is being made to Bristol Myers or another owner of that property, because as currently legally designed, the easement right of the railroad bed bisects their property, correct? And so therefore, if the easement was just followed through, you would have, as you show there, a straight kind of curvy line going through their property. Am I right or wrong?
That is correct. You know, the town can exercise its right through the easement and take that as a legal position, correct?
Correct. Okay. The second one, I wanted, John, you to go back to the fencing, because I think it's important to understand, because this is a very important point for the folks who live on Henry Street, as to what the fencing is. Isn't it the case that what you're proposing there is a board-on-board fencing that would go all along Henry Street behind all the properties that are there, as well as the same type of fencing to be on the side where the Ashwood Court residents are, unless the residents, for some reason, in one of those particular properties, wanted to have a gate or otherwise access to the trail? Is that correct?
That's correct. The foundation is committed to working closely with residents, respecting their privacy, respecting their needs. And like you said, if a particular resident, you know, this is going to be a wonderful feature, frankly, in your backyard, to be able to walk up and walk down a trail. So if we want to add some additional gates within the area, they will have access off of Morris and of. we, they will have access off of Morris and of Russell. But that's a long distance that you won't be for a person that's very right in their backyard to, to walk up. So, you know, we, we will work closely with residents to, to make sure that, again, that, that you're respecting their privacy, addressing their privacy. And if they want any special features of a gate, you know, certainly, we want to entertain that.
And then the idea is to have the vegetation, as we see those photographs. The photographs are, there would be fencing, then vegetation in front of that fencing before you get to the remainder of the private property, correct?
That, that is correct. You know, the, the landscaping is really more like icing on the cake, because you're really seeing, it's a six-foot-high board-on-board. You've really, you can see from this photo, you can't see a person walking in the back. So, you know, really, the, the landscaping is really more of a decorative to, to, so you don't see a continuous wall of fence, is to give some greenery to the fence.
Got it, thank you, John, appreciate it.
Marjorie, I have my, my.
No, I know, I can see.
Oh, okay, I thought you said you couldn't see the raised hands, okay.
Oh, I could, people who are raising their hands, I can see them, but some people don't have that, that setting. Go ahead, council member, Harrison.
Thank you, Council President. John, I am a longtime resident of Summit and this brought back memories. So I had to ask the question about the, phew, I'm going back to the 60s. The, is the bridge that you're proposing over Morris Avenue, is it replacing one that was taken down ages ago because of going over Morris Avenue? Was there existing structure there? Because I am remembering, and maybe Rosemary would remember this. Yes, when we were, when I, when we were kids, I remember my brother carrying me on his back, walking across the railroad tracks. And I'm wondering if we're now putting back something that was taken down.
We absolutely are. There, there was a bridge there at one point. We are working off the existing bridge abutments in that location. Like I said, one needs to be modified. And, and absolutely, the bridge was removed years ago, because as part of this improvement, we have to relocate some utilities that are directly in line with the bridge. So there's no way a train could pass right now if the train, if the bridge was there. So those utilities were installed after the bridge, and those utilities looked like they were there for years. And so it, it's been a very long time since that bridge was, was present. But like you said, we are, we are re-establishing that roadway. You know, the Morris Avenue likely was improved over time. And, and that's why we actually have to amend one of the abutments to raise the bridge on this end, because we just don't have that full 16-foot clear, 16-foot clearance. So, you know, there was road modifications done at one point, which we're compensating with modifying. It's not a significant rise, it's about a, about 18 inches or two foot. We have to raise this abutment and, and not, not the entire abutment, just the area that we need for the bridge. But we do need to modify it at that location.
Thank you.
Okay, council member of our town, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President, and, and thank you, John and Frank. When the Parkline Foundation last came before council, I had three main areas of concern. The first was safety, the second was privacy, and the third was financial. So the first thing, the safety seems to have been addressed. I think even in the last meeting last June, Chief Weck at the time and Chief Evers both expressed that access to the park line wouldn't necessarily be a concern. So that's, that's great news. On the privacy front, you know, the, the folks on Henry Street, Ashwood, Court N F, Russell and Eggers Court, all had serious concerns. So have the residents of Henry and Ashwood been asked yet about their, about what they think of the, of the fencing that's been proposed?
I'm going to defer to Frank, because I know he's had some discussions with some residents.
It's, it's been, it's been up there for several weeks now, but, but the short answer is no, we haven't gone door-to-door to say, what do you think of it?
Okay, I, I think, you know, from, from my conversations with them, I, I would suspect that it, this would be a pretty good solution. Along the fence question, I have a follow-up question. So it, it's eight feet wide, right? So if there's six-foot or taller fencing on both sides, I'm, I'm just wondering how much, how wide then it becomes once the fencing goes up on both sides? Because I'm worried about it being a little narrow and potentially a little dark also. Can you just speak to the width, where there's fencing?
Yeah, we, we, we would have, at a minimum, we're going to be improving the eight-foot-wide path. We'll have at least a, a one-foot gravel envelope on each side. And then, so we'd have a minimum of eight-foot of improvement. And we would certainly look at the fencing to see if we can get that off, not immediately on that gravel, but open, open it up a little bit further. But, but your concern is correct, is that, you know, we are, and, and we think, we've been, you know, concerns with ourselves is that we don't want to create extremely narrow corridors for people to walk through this area, because that's not, that's, that's taking away from the experience of walking on these rails, the trails situation. Because you, you want to be able to look out into the community, look out into the, into the, into the foreground, and you're not going to be able to do it in certain locations. Certainly, if, if, if the case is that, we, we know that the, the residents of Henry have expressed a real concern in, in that area. So certainly, we, our expectation would be to construct in this scenario. But, you know, some of the other homes are further away. You have other locations where we're not expecting every resident to want, want, you know, that fencing. Certainly, we're going to, you know, discuss that and entertain it. But, you know, we really don't want, we would try to avoid having it everywhere, is, is that, the fence on both sides.
Let me add just a little bit on to that. I think the rail bed is 13 feet. But, but the, the real issue is one side of, the houses that back up on, on one side of Henry Street are the ones that are the closest. And there, there would, there would have to be the kind of, the kind of fencing and arborvitae that are depicted here. On the other side, the houses are much further away, for the most part. And in those areas, arborvitae would probably be not only sufficient, but probably more desirable. So I think there'd be very limited, if any, situations where we would have the kind of tunnel effect that you'd be concerned with. And, and by the way, for any residents who have not seen this mock-up yet, it's, as you're driving east on Morris Avenue, going down the hill, past Overlook, toward where the overpass was many years ago, just before you get to that point, look up and to the right, and, and you will see it. And in fact, there's, you could see the, the woodchips there, you can walk up.
Okay. I have a couple of other questions, if that's okay, Council President. The, the first is the, the bridges. How, how wide are the bridges? And can they, can they hold like a, like a gator or another kind of emergency response vehicle?
They're eight-foot wide. And so they, they certainly can, can accommodate gator or some type of landscaping equipment. You, you would not want to drive, it would not be designed to have like a DPW or, you know, Mason dumper, things of that sort. It, it would be lighter vehicles.
Okay, and then the, the, on the financial side of things, which is probably a question for Frank, is, is, do we have an idea yet of the all-in cost versus what has been raised by the foundation so far?
I think the number that, I think that the number that Rob Rubino threw out at the, at the July 2019 meeting was somewhere slightly over a million, million point three, I think it was, pretty sure it was a million point three. Of that, we have on hand right now, I am not the treasurer, but I'm pretty sure we have on hand about $500,000, so maybe six. And I think the answer to funding, really, it's, it's, it's a question of time, not whether or not. Because the amount of grant funding out there, federal and state, is incredible. The rails, rails to trail are, are all over the United States. And so it's not a question of whether or not we'll be able to finish and whether the city is going to get stuck holding the bag. It's just a question of how long it's going to take.
That's great, thank you, Frank. That, that's it for, for my questions.
Okay, council member Bowman, you've been waiting patiently.
Actually, a couple of the questions were handled, but since you called on me, I'll come up with something real quick.
Come back, are you ready?
No, 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 um, I, you know, the, the one thing that was concerning was, was a tunnel vision where we'd have fencing on both sides. And, and I think you guys handled it with it being a little bit wider and, and the fact that you may have some, some homeowners that would not want it. But that being said, I guess, you know, when I look at the bridges, and we're talking about rails to trails, and I saw nothing but steps. Are we going to have any kind of ramp for, you know, young kids to, to bring their bikes up more easily rather than carry it up there, it's pretty steep? That's right off the top of my head there.
Well, we, we, we did evaluate, you know, it, the, the proposed stairs that are prepared are, you know, are the more, most economical and practical way of getting access from the existing roadways of, of Russell and, and Morris. You know, excavating along, along the embankments, it, it gets very expensive. You do have to start to get into some environmental concerns, because now you're all of a sudden, you're going to be excavating into the material and having dispose of excess material, it gets expensive. So I, I think with the, the steps will be designed so that you have adequate landing areas, so that you can walk up, stop, rest, you know, walk up, rest, walk up, rest. So it'll be designed to accommodate someone that, that is not going to be, you know, 30 steps going up. There's going to be platforms for, for resting and for turning and such.
So then the handy, following on that is, I guess, handicap accessibility will be, you know, certain entry points then?
Correct, correct. You, you, you're not required to have ADA access at every location, but ADA access would be through, through the existing path, not, not at the, the, these, these locations. And, and as you get further down the path, when the, like, like going off where the Knights of Columbus, we're coming into that location, that area is, you know, level, and that area can come in. So, you know, certainly, there is ADA combinations to access it, but not at all locations.
Both Broad Street and Hidden Valley are level and very easily accessible.
Yes.
Perfect, that's it.
Okay, council member Little.
Thank you, Council President. I had just a few follow-up questions, most of my questions were answered as well. I have a little concern about the fencing along Henry Street. You said that if some homeowners didn't want the fencing, it wouldn't be there? Because one, one of the concerns was also for security for those homeowners. This was one of the reasons that they wanted fencing there. So if some homeowners have fencing and some don't, then there'd still be access to some of the yards. So I, I would, I hope you can address that concern and let us know whether the plan is to have the solid fencing go all the way along Henry Street in order to provide security for those homeowners.
I think on Henry, wasn't on Henry, we were focusing on having it continuously on, on Henry.
Yes, I, I think the only difference is if, it will be continuous. And if one homeowner wants this style of fence and the next guy wants a little different style, that can be accommodated as well.
Okay, thank you.
It will be continuous, sorry.
And then my next question is that you said in some areas, you may be able to pull it back further from the trail, but there's quite a steep slope there along the most of those areas. So will you commit that, if, if you pull it down the slope because of the right-of-way extends that far, that, that the height would still be protective? Do you understand this?
Yes, I understand your question, absolutely.
Okay, and then my third question is just that, following up on the security issue. I know a lot of questions were raised about what happens on the parkway in the evening hours and overnight, and the residents had concern about that. So will there be a way to gate off the area at a certain hour at the, at the bridges? Or will there be some way to, to prevent access overnight?
It, it would be uncommon to, to, to fence it off and prevent people from walking on it. It's, it's, at times, it's self-regulating, because it's, it's, it's dark going through the area. When we met with the police and discussed, you know, safety aspects with the police, the police, most of our discussion was regarding the safety of the people on the path versus them having concerns regarding, you know, intrusion, you know, having vandalism or other issues on the path itself. Their focus was more on protecting the, the, the people that are on the path. And that's why we were calling out for the call boxes and other things. And then worked with them regarding access, because they wanted to make sure that if someone got hurt on, on the, on the path, they can easily call for emergency services.
So I had a couple of questions. One was, we've gone back and forth, but what is the idea about lighting on the path? Will there be lighting or no?
I, I think it's, it, it'll, it's going, it certainly can be done. It, it's just a matter of, it'll add costs, you know, add a substantial amount of cost to the project. So I don't think at this point in time that, that the foundation was proposing lighting. And like, 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 you know, you can also, I'm sorry, excuse me. But lighting can also be a concern regarding, you know, some residents may look at that as, as, as light pollution regarding seeing lights along the apartment, you know, along the pathway. So it's something that could be looked at further.
I think, I think we were anticipating that it would be treated the same as all the other city parks, which is.
Okay.
No lights.
So would that also carry for, like, we're not going to be doing snow removal and leaf removal and things like that, or we are? What, what do you anticipate on those?
Honestly, I haven't given it any thought, although, although the M O U with the city, I think, provides, I'm pretty sure it provides that the city will provide maintenance. So.
But what?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's the city's call. In other words, is this the kind of maintenance you would normally provide or not? It's, 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 it's your call.
And what about, is, are the bridges accessible for, you know, for equipment to come in to move snow? I mean, obviously, again, not a Mason dump truck, but is there, you know, I guess we have like little Bobcats. Can those kinds of things come in and remove snow with the bridges as they're designed?
Yeah, we, we could certainly accommodate having like a Bobcat or something like a gator or something along those lines to, to, and then just for general maintenance too, to, to accommodate that. But, you know, if we start to go, you know, we can certainly make the bridges larger, but then just, it, it gets to be more expensive when you're starting to look at for that type of loading.
I was just wondering, the bridge that you've planned would, would take smaller, lighter equipment only?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So are there any other, I don't see anyone else from council with, with questions?
Marjorie, it's David, sorry, I'm sorry, I don't think you can see me. Sorry, I, I did have a hand, uh, thank you. I just wanted to just clarify something that, so that everyone understands, right? So we entered into a memorandum of understanding, this M O U that was done, I guess, back in 2019 or 2018, I can't remember now. One of the things about it, and this is, I think, relevant to some of the questions that were asked by other members of council, is that it divides up the responsibility here for this project. This is ultimately a city project being funded by the foundation. So questions such as what happens with maintenance, what happens with closures, that's all dependent upon what the city wants to do with it. And, you know, notwithstanding what the foundation may say as to what they would like or not like, ultimately, it's the city's call. So if we decide, as the city, the city staff or city council decides that they want to close it during evening hours, that's up to us. If we want to have it closed during wintertime, that's up to us. As Frank alluded to and said, this is just the same thing as a city park. And so we could apply that same set of rules, but if you want to apply a different set of rules, that's up to, again, us. I think we should make sure we understand who is responsible for what. And the foundation has come to us tonight because they funded this plans, but ultimately. plans, but ultimately, the as the beginning of this plan said, this is for the City of Summit's plan. This is going to be the City of Summit's Park Line. And so, you know, we we have to remember that this is our decision making about what we're doing with it. Thank you.
Okay. So now I'm going to open it up to members of the public who have questions. If you can raise your hands. And I'm going to, because we have a lot of people on tonight and we've been on for a while already, I'm going to ask you to state your name and then I'm going to hold everyone to three minutes or as close to three minutes as possible. So Jeffrey Lopez, go ahead.
Yeah, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address.
Jeffrey Lopez, two Eaton Court, Summit, New Jersey.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So I was just wondering, kind of what impact it would have on Hidden Valley Park currently, especially with the animals and all that stuff. I've seen that Hidden Valley Park has been improved a little bit. There was a lot of a lot of trees, a lot of downed trees around. So I was kind of wondering what effect it would have on both the animals, but also just in general, what it would have, what effect it would have throughout the park. And I was also wondering if the presentation that you had is available to the public. That's all. Thank you.
I I could say that the 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 improvements are really focusing on the existing railroad bed and it's not going to do Neander into the park with the exception by the Bristol Myers Squibb area with that limited area. Other than that, it is going to be confined to the railroad bed.
Is the is the railroad bit, sorry? Can I continue? Okay. Isn't the railroad bit still part of the park?
Yes, it's it's again, the the that it is part of the, well, I guess it is, you technically would be part of the park, but the when you're saying what impacts are going to be, the you the impacts are going to be limited to the area that's basically the the top of the following the the railroad bed. So we're not going to be cutting trees. We're not going to be doing any substantial grading. It's just working off the existing grades.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And answer to your question about the presentation, you can find it on the city's website. It should be posted.
Awesome. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. All right, moving on, I've got Rails to Trails Conservancy. Go ahead.
Are they muted?
No, it says they're, yes, they they've muted themselves. Can you unmute yourself, please?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Sorry. My name's Tom Sexton, S E X T O N, and I'm at twenty nine thirteen Sunset Drive in Camp Hill, Pennsylvania. I'm the director of the Ten State Northeast Region for Rails to Trails Conservancy. And as of last month, member of the New Jersey D E P's Trail Council. You may know, the Conservancy is headquartered in Washington, DC, began in nineteen eighty six, and America has over twenty two thousand miles of rail trails right now, and and that steadily increasing. Rail trails are safe for the user and adjacent property owners who most often see their property values enhanced. Our participation in this project is recent and stems from our interest in northern New Jersey, given its many trail opportunities and being one of the most densely populated regions in the US, the need its citizens have for physical activity and alternative transportation for purposeful destinations such as going to work, going transit, to shop, visit a friend, or go to the park. Specifically, we are interested in this. Our Summit Park Line is a critical part of a longer potential trail that currently starts in Morris County and could run deep into Union County. This over thirty five year old traction line rail trail currently starts in Morris Town next to the New Jersey Transit Stop Combat Station on the New Jersey Transit Line and runs southeast for almost three miles to the outside of Madison. I'm working with Morris County to expand it to Chatham and hopefully working with Union County in the future to bring it into Summit where it would connect with the Park Line. From Summit, this surprisingly still owned, still publicly owned right of way, formerly the railway rail railroad travels through Springfield and then Union and on to Roselle Park. Rails Trails Conservancy is veiled to assist Park Line supporters, the council, and answer any questions the public may have about this unique opportunity to create a purposeful greenway. Thank you. One quick thing on the on the stairs. One part solution for bicycles is to construct a tire channel on one side, especially the upside, but you can put it on both sides where the bicyclists can put their tires in that channel. It's a couple, couple inches wide. And then that makes it safer for everybody and it eases their their descent or ascent rather than carrying their bike. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Larry Costigan, go ahead. You can go ahead and ask again. Mr. Costigan, can can you go ahead and speak? You appear to be unmuted.
It looks like he muted himself.
He actually seems to be unmuted as far as what I can see. Maybe we should come back to him, if you can get that straightened out. All right, so we've got Carrie Hardy. Go ahead, Mr. Hardy. You need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. We really just tuned in to see what was going on. Vivian and I have been strong supporters of this for two years. And it certainly moves slowly with every deliberate speed. So we're urging you to move. I know you're going to vote on this at your next meeting and then perhaps we'll have some action in terms of the bridge over Morris County. I'm over Morris Avenue, excuse me. But I I I think that the the Steering Committee and the the Foundation are just doing a fantastic job. A lot of work is put into this and I hope it is rewarded.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you just state your address for the record?
I'm sorry, yes.
Full name as well, Mr. Hardy.
It's Carrie R. Hardy, and we live at one Oak Mill Road in Summit. And been here for forty five years.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
So we're going to try. Yep. So we're going to try Larry Costigan again. Mr. Costigan, why don't you give it a shot? Can you unmute yourself? Okay, looks good. You're still muted, Mr. Costigan.
Council President, if I may, sometimes the the computer has its own speaker. Could they call or just check to see if their speaker is muted as well? They're too different.
That's what it looks like. Okay, Mr. Costigan, can you just check your computer speaker and see if that's, you can unmute that? Is it showing that you're muted?
There's two, there's a Zoom speaker and there's a computer monitor speaker.
All right, should we go on to the next person then and come back?
Yes.
Okay, so I've got Rick. Go ahead.
Oh, can you hear me?
Uh, yeah.
So I'm at six Summit.
You need to state your name as well.
I'm sorry, Ricardo Tapia, six Henry Street in Summit. So one of my concerns here being on Henry is that the slope that's right behind my house with the mockup that they did, if they put a six foot fence and they have an eight foot wide path, it's literally going to be like three feet while the people are walking. It's not tall enough of a fence to give me privacy in my backyard. Besides that, the mockup that they did at six Glen Side Avenue, I know that you guys had told people to just go and walk back there, but that's private property. My dad owns that property. And he wasn't asked permission to access his property to do the building that you guys did or the foundation did or the landscaper. But now you guys are asking the public to go through his driveway to walk what is currently there, which he does not give access to.
John, could you clarify? I'm not familiar with the location.
I think I can. I wish I wish we had Rob Rubino on here because he was given permission.
So Rob Rubino got permission from this guy Derek, but obviously you guys have the lay of the land right in front of you and know that Derek's house has nothing to do with the property that touches the railroad track. Derek lives at one fifty four Morris Avenue, my dad's property at six Glen Side, as you can see, owns that whole property that wraps around the driveway, which he gives Derek in an in and out easement of twelve feet to get a car in and out. That's the only access Derek has. Derek does not own this property. And where you guys built, you guys built through my dad's property. So he doesn't wish to have the public going down his driveway.
Okay.
To access this point right now, as you guys just stated in your in your meeting.
Okay, well, then, fine, then they then the public should not do that.
I mean, they're more than welcome to look from the street, but it's 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 a one way in driveway. So if a car goes in there, then he has no access in or out of his driveway.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Thank you for clarifying that. It it is just for the for the benefit of the public. It is fully visible from the street and
He gets a lot of cars that just pull up there and just literally park in his driveway and then he has no entrance in or out. And then it just becomes a an argument with people because they feel that it's it's an open road.
Right. We don't want that to happen.
Okay. And then I just did had one other question. So I've been on this street for roughly twenty years. On two thousand sixteen, you guys told us, the city told us that you guys were going to start, now that you own the property, we're going to start cleaning back there. Since two thousand sixteen, the City of Summit has only cleaned once. I've called the city and requested to get cleaned back there. I've never gotten a response from anybody. So my concern is if the town isn't doing it now, what's my, what's my insurance that they're going to do it once this is up?
I'm going to have to turn that over to to Aaron Schrager. I think he can probably answer the question. I know there has been maintenance work done in the area. Aaron, can you answer that?
Yes, I can, Council President. Over the last five or six years, we did have a contractor go out there on three occasions and the city has gone out about twice. So I mean, if I could just ask, if you have a specific request, we can go out and take a look for you and clean it up as needed. Or at least just now, I know your address, I can send Public Works Crew out there just to take a look.
Yeah, if you can contact me back. I believe I, the last message I left, I believe you're new to the, I guess, the position, but I left it with the gentleman that was in the meeting the last in July. I can't remember his name. I'd have to look it up really quick. Don't know it.
Yeah, that's okay. We'll we'll look into it for you. Was your, I forgot, was it six? I I
Yeah. Paul Kalisi Kassasis is who I spoke to and left several messages.
Yeah, he's he's currently retired, so I'll be filling it in. But but we'll, I'll make sure your request is heard.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So moving on to our next commenter. Let's see, I've got Jay's iPad. Go ahead.
Hello, Council President. This is Jay Brinkerhoff at twelve Westminster Road.
Okay, hello, Jay.
Hello.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I for I'm at twelve Westminster Road. For full disclosure, I'm a member of the Park Line Foundation Board of Trustees. I'd like to help path. The right of way is fifty feet wide. The existing rail bed is approximately fourteen feet wide. As John said and Frank added to, we intend to intend to pave eight feet of it. But as I said, the rail bed is much wider than that, so that there is adequate room for a paved portion, the drainage shawl, if and if necessary, that John described, plus landscaping, plus the fence. And of course, the fence can be, if necessary, slightly a foot or two.
Okay. Was that, I think we've lost him. All right, we'll move on.
No, he's there.
Jay Cho, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jay Cho. I live at one four five Morris Avenue in Summit, New Jersey. You could actually see my house from the survey. I just had a question about the height because it went from thirteen feet to, I believe, fifteen feet for the bridge over Morris Avenue. And I do have a concern about the height with maybe possibly over height vehicles. What what would there be a situation with maybe over over height truck potentially hitting it and basically stopping all traffic on Morris Avenue?
The the proposed height is sixteen feet, which is a standard bridge height, you know, within the county. So it's not going to be, would not impose any restrictions on vehicles in this area.
Okay, because I was, I heard before it was thirteen feet, but thank you. And also, I was as with leaf cleaning, I'm actually a volunteer. I've been working the phase one property for quite a bit. And I've been leaf blowing my own little section over there. So I'm I'm pretty sure if we could get more volunteers, the leaf blowing shouldn't be an issue. Actually, I do remember myself and another person, another volunteer, went up to the proposed Henry Street side and we were promptly told to leave the site when we were trying to actually clean up and remove some of the vegetation so it would be passable. That's about it.
Okay, thank you for your comment. So moving on, Ingrid, go ahead.
Hi, it's actually Larry Costigan. I had to use Ingrid's computer because technology.
Larry, can you just state your?
Yeah, so this is Larry Costigan at eight Henry Street in here in Summit. Listening very intently tonight and as I did last July. And unfortunately, I I'm still hearing a lot of the same comments, which is, I haven't given it a lot of thought and we haven't looked at that. We'll look at that later and and these are the same things that a lot of the council members said last July, which is come back with definitive answers. And if we're talking about doing such a major project and trying to vote to approve or disapprove of this, everything needs to be very black and white and there can't be any ambiguity out there as to, we'll look at that later. I think in fairness to the residents, particularly those that live here on Henry Street, I think everything needs to be, this is the way it's going to be. And this is what we're voting on. And to David's point, Councilman Nadeau's point, one once this is decided on, and if it is approved, it is the responsibility of the town to handle this. Based on what Phase One has looked at and the limited number of people that I've seen using it and the fact that and the fact that it's not well-maintained already, um, we have some strong concerns about what would happen in the phase that goes right behind our house, once the town takes responsibility for this. Um, mainly, you're talking about putting a wooden fence directly underneath power lines. Okay, and next to those power lines and the wooden fence is a lot of trees and shrubbery and can cause brush fires. As I mentioned last July, and a lot of my neighbors mentioned, this is in close proximity to our house. Um, when, when this fence is damaged by storms, we've had two major storms in the last six years. Is the town prepared to pay? Are they prepared to repair these fences? Are they prepared to repair the bridge when a, when a truck drives into it, like we see happen in Chatham all the time, by the wine store? Um, cuz the overpass is too low. And these are a lot of concerns. We're still getting a lot of, I haven't given it any thought. Um, I appreciate everybody's due diligence, but the, these are a lot of unanswered questions that still have not been answered. And, and I'll be on, completely honest with you, it offends me to the fact that Matt Gould, God rest his soul, had mentioned to everybody, it's particularly the Parkline, he pointedly said to them, please go knock on the door of the residents of Henry Street and Russell Court and ask them, can we work with you on this project? And the Parkline Commission has continued to put their head down, not come and, and try to communicate with the residents that this is directly affected. They're, they're hiring engineering firms, they're doing this and that, and they never once asked us, that's, that, that fence is not high enough. That's not what we talked about at the meeting last July. We talked about a minimum 12-foot fence and a fence that you can't climb and not having a wooden fence that can cause a fire near brush. The, the, and I know I'm going on and on, so I'm only gonna ask one question and maybe some of this can be addressed more. The drainage has still not been addressed. You talk about, and we, and every council member has gone up there, thankfully you came to the house and, and you met with me and you walked up to the top of that hill. Do not let this be, don't, do not be fooled by this. You know how narrow it is up there and you know how rocky that terrain is. Where will the snow and the water drain? Right now you have natural vegetation up there. You put a trail down and that slopes right directly into our homes. The soil, I wanna know how deeply it was, was it dug into the ground for that soil to be investigated? Because if you're talking about moving a lot of soil to build these over, over trestles, over, over Morris Avenue, you're talking about having to dig deep into the soil. Okay, to construct these. So, h- how was the soil tested? Did someone put a little coffee scooper in there and test the soil? Did they really dig in there? Were those trained chemicals would have went? Thank you, Marjorie, for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kostigan. Um, so, John, um, can I ask you to answer the questions about the, I believe drainage has been addressed. Can you go into a little more detail on that?
Certainly, a lot of questions that came out all at one time.
Yes.
Certainly drainage, um, was looked at and, uh, we, we did look at the soil conditions and, and, uh, you know, what is proposed is has worked in other applications. Basically, it's, it's an eight-foot-wide uh, path and it's just going to shed the water into an infiltration trench that's located along the perimeter of, of the path. It has been an, an effective means of, of mitigating, um, you know, stormwater on, on these linear-type projects. Um, when we did the soil borings, um, they went a min- minimum of three feet to, to look at the soil borings. In some locations, they did go deeper. They, 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 when they, I think they, the lowest refusal was three feet cuz they couldn't go any further because of, of rock or some other stru- structures. So, so they did do soil borings in the area. Um, the, uh, the bridge, we are proposing to utilize the existing bridge abutments. So, there is not proposed any substantial amount of soil excavations in the facility of the bridge abutments, um, because they're massive structures. They're, they're, they're designed for, um, you know, heavy trains and, and we're proposing to put pedestrian bridges over them. And, and we looked at the uh, condition of the, of the abutments and we would be proposing, um, some masonry repair, repairing cracks and things of that nature, but um, we do not, uh, you know, looked at the, um, um, you know, we, we, we have, we have a detailed design, uh, already for the, the bridge itself. And, um, I, I, I think when you look at this section of, of the pathway, um, you know, I think the design is set. There, there is no further questions, you know, the, the foundation is proposing a fence. Um, it, it's proposed a six-foot high because six-foot high would, would, uh, you know, it would, would be a, a, a ta- typical fence for, for privacy purposes. You know, you are looking up at, uh, on an angle, so, you know, certainly if someone was even higher than, you know, higher than six feet, uh, you may not even see the top of their head, but nevertheless, you know, it's a reasonable-sized uh, fence, you know, going to a, a 12-foot-high fence within a residential area is, is, is very unconventional. Um, you know, that's something that's, is not really, you know, you know, looked at. Um, and so certainly this, this area is designed. It, it, it's, we have a layout, we know the fencing is gonna be installed at, at the top of the slope. It's not gonna be down the slope or proposing the landscaping. So, you know, this section is, is set. The only thing that when we opened the door regarding screening in other sections, we'll be working with other neighborhoods uh, to refine what that screening is, but I think for the, the rear portions of Henry's, the, the design is, is done. It's, it's, we're proposing a six-foot-high fence with, uh, with the, the landscaping.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think, um, uh, my recollection is that there has never been a discussion of more than a six-foot fence in the past, but I would urge, um, the Parkline Foundation to, to start having those conversations with the residents about, you know, what they'd like to see as far as fencing, um, now that we're at this point. Um, and I think we have one more, uh, uh, Mr. Tapia, are you, is your hand still up because you have something else to say, or is that? Um, is that just a, a, a raised hand from before?
I did have one more thing to ask.
Okay.
So, uh, it, are there gonna be a retaining wall that you guys are holding this structure with? Cuz right now, some houses have a retaining wall that most of the houses that do, the retaining wall has broken and fallen off. So, is this gonna be structurally found, sound now to, to hold weight of something that hasn't been used in 50 years? Because like now when deer walk up there, I get stuff that falls onto my property all the time.
Uh, yes, the, 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 the abutments as, as part of the project would be stabilized. Um, any, you know, as part of the path itself, i- the, the, the top portion of the path is going to be, um, stabilized. Um, if there's a particular concern of any, uh, debris or something along the perimeter, the, with the residents, certainly that would be looked at, you know, nothing a- at the moment, you know, looked at as a major concern, but if someone has a particular concern of, of, of loose debris associated with the embankment, we can certainly look at that, but you know, through our inspections, we didn't see anything that warranted, um, any special design considerations.
And will the Parkline be talking to the residents at this point?
I have to defer to Frank and Jay.
Unmute myself. I think Jay lost his connection. Um, yes. Um, we have and we will continue to.
Okay.
Um. All right, with that, are there, um, I'm just gonna give council one last thought. If anyone has anything they wanna say on council? Okay, so, hearing none, um. Uh, thank you so much for your presentation.
Sorry, Marjorie. It's David, can I?
Yes, go ahead, David.
Sorry. Let, let me try to wrap this up because I think we've, as, as, as previously said, had a workshop about this, we had a council meeting about this, long extensive discussion during that council meeting. And now we've had a response to those comments. I think where we are is it's true, as Larry Kostigan says, not every single question can be answered, but it cannot be answered in this mechanism. Honestly, it cannot because this is a linear park. They're going to be at different places as they go ahead and do the design. They will need to look at specific things. That's the nature of this thing. It's not like as if we're building a static building in one particular location. We're going over a different area. A, a, a pretty long set of areas, and so different issues will come up as they go through it. But I think now we have a general idea of what this will look like. A pretty darn good idea. We have this idea what the staircases will look like, we have an idea what the bridges look like, and we should recognize there's a, currently a bridge on Ashwood. And to my knowledge, there isn't as if trucks are going and hitting that bridge every other day or anytime I've been on council. So I think we can relatively safely assume that for the most part, you know, building a 16-foot-high bridge will probably do it. Am I saying it's impossible at a trouble it? No. But let's be, we have to think of it in a reasonable context of what we can and cannot do. My proposal for us to consider as a council going forward, because in some sense, we have to come to a decision about this. We've going on for years and years, and this has been talked about before. I came on council and I'm almost my, end of my fifth year here. And I was at somewhere in the middle, I guess, of the Parkline discussion. We have to make a decision about whether we're doing this or not, because otherwise we're spending a lot of time and effort. And as I said before, this is a city project. It's being funded by the foundation. If there are discussions about what this should look like, what this should feel like, what all of those things, the city needs to be involved in that. That's who needs to be involved, from my perspective. Everybody else could disagree with me, but that's the role. We need to take ownership of this project if we wanna get it done. The foundation's there to fund it. They can go out there, fundraise and everything. If there needs to be public discussions, city should hold them. Part of the discussion, by the way, the public discussion, public outreach, are in fact these council meetings and a workshop and a previous council meeting. It's not as if we haven't had transparency about this project. Since at least I've been in council, we try to be transparent about it. And that's why we had an MOU that laid out everybody's responsibilities or that again, transparency, people knew where people stood on this. And what I would propose for us to do is to amend that MOU in order that if we're moving forward with this project, we go ahead and segmentize it so people can see in each segment what needs to be done. And then when these guys, when they've spent, I think like $100,000 on these existing plans, they'll spend, have to spend more money, frankly, on getting, um, plans that are more detailed in nature. And then people can talk about those detailed plans and how to implement them. But we have to make a decision about whether or not we're moving forward with it. And once we make that decision, then we need to implement it through a series of segments to get it completed, because there isn't complete funding for the entire project. We need to chew it off in segments, so this way there's actually funding. City taxpayer dollars aren't paid towards the funding of this. But, once the funding is there, we go ahead with that segment. Once the funding is there, we go on with the next segment. That's what I would propose for all of us to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Hairston, you had something to say?
Well, um, thank you, Council President. Um, Councilmember Naidu addressed it. I was actually very interested in the memo, memorandum of understanding, the MOU, and, uh, wanting to know what was our capacity to, uh, go over it and change it before we have to. And I don't need, and when is the, the vote for the Parkline? I would, I actually am asking for that clarification. But, uh, he did raise the point that I was interested in what was our, um, opportunity to look at the memorandum of understanding.
I think we need to go back and, um, and amend the memorandum of understanding and work with the Parkline Foundation on that, and then it will come back to council for a vote. So, we're not, we're not quite ready for a vote, um, but hopefully soon.
Oh, we're not gonna. That's dead.
Okay, so, um, so with that, um, I'm gonna, uh, 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 thank you very much to, uh, to John Rushkin, to the Parkline Foundation. And, um, I'm gonna ask that we move on to the rest of the agenda now. So, um, the, the next thing on the agenda is public comments and. You know what, someone is, uh, someone needs to mute themselves.
All right, good night, everyone. Be safe.
Okay, good night, thank you. So, um, let's see, uh, so right now, this is the point in the meeting where it's time for public comments and the issues that are not topics for tonight's business agenda, uh, are. So, um, I'm gonna ask you to keep it to three minutes cuz it's getting late and, um, state your name and your address, please. Are there any public comments?
Council President?
Um. Yes.
We received one, uh, public comment this evening via email, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Okay, would you like to just do that one first?
Okay. Uh, this email was received today. Yes, from, uh, Gwen Van Vulcanberg. Uh, she did not provide a street address. Uh, she says, "I see there is a sidewalk master plan being discussed at the meeting, at the next meeting. Is there a po- any possibility of sidewalks being placed on Ashland Road between Rotary Drive and Silver Lake Road? In fact, in extending the sidewalk from Silver Lake and Ashland to Mountain and Ashland would, would be even better." I'll, uh, I'll stop there. There's a second paragraph on another matter.
Just to clarify, um, Ms. Van Vulcanberg's request, um, we are actually not talking about the sidewalk master plan. That was actually approved about a year ago. What we're talking about tonight is the traffic calming plan. But, um, the, that segment from Brewery Drive to, uh, Silver Lake has been, i- is on the existing sidewalk master plan, as I recall. But it's a county road and so that means that we are not doing any construction on that location. Um, uh, Aaron, would you like to respond? Is there anything else to add to that?
Now, thank you, Council President. You are correct that we do include that segment in our, um, sidewalk installation guidelines and, and plan. Uh, though it is a county road, it would be the city's responsibility to install the sidewalk. So as we're progressing here, looking at locations, um, we'll take the letter received today as a a vote in favor of that area and, and that's an area we will consider. I will just share that we're looking at about eight sections right now for an upcoming project. Um, so I can't put a timeline to it, but, but we'll add that as an area we'll, um, you know, take a look at, so.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, all right, Madam Clark, what was the second part?
Uh, the second part says also, "There seems to be a lot of people on Summit Happenings on Facebook concerning leaf blowers. Is there any way the number of days or hours per day allowed can be reduced? Perhaps a rotation in various neighborhoods can have only three days of commercial blowers. Also, there is concern about the lack of enforcement of the ordinance hours of 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. One landscaper on my street recently started at 7:15 AM, which is well before the 8:00 AM ordinance. How do I handle this and what is the city doing about it?" That is it.
Okay, so on the first part, we have an ad hoc committee working on looking into leaf blowers chaired by, um, our Capital Projects Committee, which is Councilmember Little, Councilmember Naidu and, um, and Director of Department of Community Services, Aaron Schrager. Uh, and members of, uh, I believe we have members of the public as well as landscapers on that committee as well. So they'll be looking at what can be done. As far as, um, as enforcement, um, I believe the police non-emergency line would be the place to call for before hour, for blowers going too early. Is that correct? Um, Chief Bartolotti?
Yes, that is correct, Council President. And, uh, that is the best way to inform us is through that non-emergency number. And that's, uh, two, 908-273-0051.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, and moving on, um, I see Hazel Siegel. Go ahead, Hazel.
Hi there, Hazel Siegel, S.I.E.G.E.L., 12 Dunder Drive. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. At the beginning of the meeting, I know that, um, Mayor Rades was talking about the surgeon cases. We now have 48 cases since November 1st. I was thinking back to earlier in the fall when there was an initiative that the town put out where the police were giving out gift cards to students and kids that they would see in town to reward them for good mask-wearing. I'm just wondering if there's been any thought, um, in the other direction about providing a deterrent of some sort for people who are hosting parties. The latest surgeon cases, I think many of us are aware that they're linked to a lot of Halloween parties that happened where there were large groups of people who were indoors and unmasked, photos uh, evident on, uh, on social media and on many of the town pages, there's been a lot of outrage from other families about these parties that are happening because it affects everyone. Our town cases are going up, the high school is currently. it affects everyone. Our town cases are going up. The high school is currently still in their two week remote shutdown because there are a lot of people who are flouting the regulations. And as we get into the colder weather, it seems more likely that people would be inclined to gather indoors despite the fact that the indoor regulations have now gone down to 10. I know it's a slippery slope, and I know it's tricky because it, these are our neighbors and these are our people, but it, it feels like there needs to be something done to kind of encourage people to actually follow the rules that will be to the benefit of everyone.
Uh, thank you for your comment. Um, I think I'd like to turn this over to the Safety Committee because I think that's where these discussions are being had. Uh, Councilmember Hairston?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to answer that question because in safety, we actually have talked about balancing enforcement. And with our, uh, police officers stretched, we have really leaned toward, as Hazel mentioned, uh, positive reinforcement for the mask wearing. And, um, uh, I, I, I'm, I'm happy just to say what popped into my mind in bigger cities, the enforcement is not through the police department. The enforcement is through the Health Department and they have someone. And so we haven't had that conversation yet, but we are a thousand percent talking about it. I will uh, give, uh, the, the Police Chief an opportunity to say something, and if Councilmember Little wants to speak about it, but it is very much on our minds. The contact tracing, um, disregard as well as, um, having events that are against it. It's very difficult. It's very difficult. So, uh, Chief?
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. Excuse me, through you, Council President. Um, you're, you are correct. It is a slippery slope, and when we're dealing with private residents, it becomes very tricky for enforcement, uh, through the police department as well as the Health Department. As Councilmember Hairston stated, contact, contact tracing is extremely important. And that's really what a message that we need to get out. We're seeing statewide that, um, compliance with contact tracing is falling, uh, to numbers lower than they were when this pandemic first started in, in March of this year. So that is very important. In terms of enforcement, uh, we are, uh, share similar thoughts throughout the county. And we're working with County Prosecutor's Office and Attorney General. We see the best ways to, um, get these messaging out more than we have been, uh, as a city and also how enforcement might work. Uh, one of the things is with regards to restaurants, as we see those restrictions start to tighten, enforcement is going to transfer, uh, from the local municipalities to the state ABC. So um, that's an ongoing conversation that we're having at the county and state levels.
Thank you. Um, so, um, oh, uh, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. Am I mistaken in, in thinking that one of the earlier executive orders, 105, 106, prohibited the City of Summit from being any more restrictive than the state is or, or imposing any additional penalty? Are we, if the city even had a desire to do that, would it be, would it be possible?
That's correct. The, the executive order, if you recall, early on, um, certain counties were imposing and certain municipalities were imposing their own restrictions. And the governor clarified and said that the, all the restrictions that are put in place come from the governor's office. Recently, I think it was Executive Order 192, did give municipalities and counties the ability to implement an APM curfew if their numbers go up to a certain level. That's the only time that that they've done it on a county or municipal basis. Um, but you have to work with the, the Board of Health and the County Board of Health before you do that. But generally speaking, we do not have the ability to override or enhance any of Governor Murphy's executive orders dealing with restrictions in place related to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Uh, Mayor Rades.
Um, thank you very much, Council President. Um, since the governor came out with the, the executive order today regarding, um, limiting indoor gatherings and outdoor, um, I, I think we, we have to have a conversation, Chief, about, you know, does this give any teeth to some of the enforcement and also just messaging more, more broadly through the community that this is something that the governor has put in place and that, you know, we'll be monitoring it. It just sort of gives a, um, like a warning, if you will. Um, I know that the legalities are such that unless there's, you know, it's, it's a, you, you can't just go in and arrest people for, or for a, uh, an executive order infraction. Um, on the other hand, just in trying to get, I mean, honestly, at the Communications Office and I, we're at our wits' end with how to get the message across to people to wear a mask um, and to do other things. So one, two things that we're going, you're going to see is the, um, there's a banner that goes across Springfield Avenue that announces, you know, various SDI events and so forth and so on. The one that's going up with holiday activity shortly is going to have underneath it um, another banner saying, you know, about wearing a mask. Um, and we also have ordered, I believe, 50 of the lawn signs, you know, that look like all the lawn signs we've been seeing all over the place for the last couple of months. But it's, it's going to talk about, um, it's going to say, wear a mask. I think one side's English, one side's Spanish. And we're going to put them in various city property locations throughout the city. And we just have to keep trying to continue to message. So I urge everyone through whatever platforms you have to, to message, um, that it's important to do that. And, uh, and also we did discuss that if there are parties and Chief is going to have his officers on the lookout, if there are parties where children are being, people under the age of 21 are being served alcohol, then we can certainly go in and, and, you know, break up that party and, and issue a summons for, for hosting of a hosting violation, which is a pretty expensive fine. So that is something that we can do, um, and we will do. We had already talked about that. But, um, so we'll talk tomorrow, Chief, about what we think we can, can do. But thank you, Hazel. You're absolutely right. The only, the only good news to my understanding, um, is that of the 48 people that are um, positive in Summit, I don't believe any have been hospitalized. So, and, and not many are over 60. It's mostly younger people. People over 60 are being a little more careful.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so moving on, Melissa Shear, go ahead.
Hi, um, Melissa Lipschitz, actually 228 Kent Place Boulevard. I'm not here to complain about my street. Um, though maybe at some other point I will. Um, but I am, I'm actually here, I'm a good friend of Hazel's, um, and she and I have talked a lot about uh, these parties and such. And I'm going to tell you, as a publicist, what I do a lot of is I monitor social media for companies. And I took it upon myself to monitor some of the accounts, uh, the social media accounts uh, for some of the kids I know, uh, in town who have public accounts. And I can tell you, I was shocked and horrified to see on some of these picture sharing accounts, it's called VISCO, VSCO, VISCO Accounts, um, that parents are in pictures with groups of 10, 15, 20 kids. Uh, no masks, indoors, there's alcohol around, the kids are 17, and this is all over the internet. And it just, you know, it really just disappointed me because, you know, we, we should know better. You, you kind of say, well, you know, the kids and, and they, teens are going to be teens. But these are parents, these are adults, uh, getting in pictures, totally sanctioning this behavior. Um, and they're almost thumbing their noses at uh, the protocols that are so essential that we put in as a city and that Governor Murphy will be putting in as a state and hopefully at some point at a federal level. Um, so I'm really just here to support Hazel, uh, and a lot of other parents uh, who, you know, have put the time into accommodating kids um, in their backyards, keeping things outside, social distancing, masks, that kind of stuff, that there are a number of parents who really just don't care. Um, and I, I don't know what, if it's Department of Health, Police Department, whatever it is, uh, just know and trust that it is happening. And I don't know that these parents are going to stop doing it. Um, you know, again, there are pictures out there. We know who they are. So, um, you know, I don't know that they're going to stop doing it. And even after Halloween, uh, there could be parties for Thanksgiving or Christmas or whatever. Uh, I've had that, you know, Valentine's Day, pick an occasion. Um, so that's kind of just all my, my comment is, and, and just thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Lipschitz. I appreciate it. And, um, and the Safety Committee will continue to discuss ways that we can address this. I think we are, you know, we share your concern and, uh, I wish there were an easier solution. Um, so that, um, Jim Bennett, go ahead, Mr. Bennett.
Yes, thank you, President Fox. Jim Bennett, 38 Fairview Avenue. Good evening, Mayor and Members of Council. At the last meeting on November 4th, we had a presentation, uh, from Carol Bianchi of JC P and L. And, uh, Ms. Bianchi, uh, said that she would ask her management if she could get the green light to release the PowerPoint presentation that she made at that meeting. Uh, so far, I've not heard. And I did make two calls to her office and my, neither of my calls was returned. Now I can only, I wanted to ask her about that and about one other point. I can only speculate that maybe Ms. Bianchi doesn't respond to members of the public out of concern for having her time being eaten away. So I would like to ask the Ad Hoc Committee if, uh, they would please follow up with Ms. Bianchi about the release of the, uh, PowerPoint presentation and about making it available to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I think we can, um, we can certainly make that request of her and follow up. Unless, Mayor, do you know of any progress on that?
I do not, but I'm happy to send her an email first thing in the morning or call her phone, the phone tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you. All right, so, um, I don't see any other hands up, uh, from the public. So, uh, that being the case, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we'll move on to the regular agenda items. Um, and we have, uh, first of all, um, an ordinance for introduction, uh, from Capital Projects and Community Services, Councilmember Little. Uh, wait, uh, Madam Clark, can you go ahead and read it?
Yes, Council President, I will read it. Uh, this is ordinance for introduction ID number 7502. Uh, an ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 35 of the General Code of the City of Summit to establish the 2020 Development Regulations Ordinance.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember Little, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. Um, this is, um, the, uh, second introduction of the revised DRO, repeal and replace DRO. Um, if, just a brief history for those of you who are not familiar is that the council last December replaced, um, passed a replacement for the DRO. It was after a lot of work. At that point, we knew that there were going to be some revisions that were needed to the DRO, but we wanted to get the bulk of it passed and in place because it was a great improvement on the old regulations. Um, so for the last year, a subcommittee has been looking at the, um, DRO in very great detail and making, um, you know, changes in typo, making sure sections back, match up, making sure the language matches. So, um, a lot of small changes, um, but which necessitated a repeal and replace to, to make sure that those changes are accurately reflected. Um, at the last council meeting, we tabled that because there was a section which required notice to the public, which had not been done. And another section where, which, uh, you know, a term was inadvertently left, left out. So now we are back with the, um, the actual, um, DRO for repeal and replace. And I will just note for council members, um, in the public to reflect for the hearing next week that the notable changes are, um, that the definition of brewery and the, um, uses for brewery have been added. Um, the preservation easement has been slightly amended to include, um, National Register of Historic Places as part of the definition. Um, the, um, porches and entryways, um, definition that now includes rear yard and side yard. Um, and the dormers, um, section was slightly modified. And so we will be having a hearing on, um, the repeal and replace of the DRO at the next council meeting. And I ask that we introduce this ordinance.
I second it.
Okay, um, so, Madam Clark, could we, uh, please have a roll call?
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidu?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. So, uh, the motion carries. We'll have a hearing on December 1st on this item. Um, so moving on, we have a, an ordinance for introduction from Administrative Policies and Community Services. Madam Clark, could you please read that ordinance?
ID number 7506, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 35 Development Regulations Ordinance. Article 7, definitions, subsection 35 dash 7.2 to add the definition of medical marijuana dispensary. And Article 9, general provisions, subsection 35 dash 9.2, prohibited uses.
Councilmember Naidu?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, as everyone should be aware, uh, at the last election, there was a proposition dealing with the legalization for the sale of recreational marijuana, which passed overwhelmingly in the state. And here, including in the City of Summit. Uh, but at present, the state legislature is allowing municipalities to decide whether or not they want to allow stores who sell recreational marijuana in their particular town. The sale of medical marijuana has already been permitted, uh, through the use of the compassionate use law, prior to this referendum. Since last year, the Administrative Committee has been considering this issue. We've been looking at different options, considering all, uh, the issues, considering it, uh, about it. And we've decided, uh, based upon a thorough examination of, uh, the fact that you would have the ability to have, uh, recreational stores selling marijuana, not only just in the downtown, but in the neighborhood businesses, uh, that are throughout the town, that we would like to introduce an ordinance for council's consideration, which would allow dispensaries to sell and distribute um, medical marijuana, but which would prohibit stores that sell marijuana and devices, uh, for recreational use. Should be noted that this will not impact individuals who use marijuana. That's already been decided by the state uh, law. But this is about the location of stores and what types of stores we allow in town, which is a common thing that we do through our DRO. And with that, I'd like to introduce, uh, this ordinance for hearing, which will be held at the next council meeting. Thank you.
I second that.
Okay, um, Madam Clark, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Yes. Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidu?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Nay.
President Fox?
Aye. The motion carries. Um, we'll have a hearing on December 1st on this. Uh, moving on to resolutions now. Uh, we've got two, no, three resolutions, no, two resolutions from Administrative Policies and Community Services. Uh, Councilmember Naidu, go ahead.
Council President, you scared me there with three because I was like, I don't know which is the third one. So it'll be interesting. I'll try to make up one. Thank you very much. Okay, the first resolution. As the holiday season is nearly upon us, it is important to remember that many faiths and cultures celebrate during this period of time. This resolution recognizes that if we allow one faith to celebrate and use city property, then we need to allow other faiths as well as secular messages that are consistent with the Supreme Court precedents to be used city property. Some of you will remember that back in 2018, a nine-year-old girl wrote us asking if we could allow a symbol of her religious faith, which is menorah, to be on a city property. Well, now, two years later, I can tell Iris Gould, who I think is listening to us right now, that we are, that I'm proud to introduce this resolution, which allows us, uh, to use, uh, to let city property be used for both secular and religious messages for a limited period of time during the holiday season.
A second.
Um, okay, uh, any comments from members of council? Uh, Councilmember Bowman?
Yeah, I, you know, I appreciate this and, and, you know, I thought long and hard about it. it. And, and I guess it, it really comes down to, it needs to be equal size, equal presentation, equal placement and all that. And while we have a large park area, you know, my, my personal preference is we should probably just stay away from this and not have any religious or secular on the green. You know, we all have churches that we can place it on, but it's more about the use of public land. So that's my, my personal opinion is I'd rather stay away from it.
Can I ask you just a question then? Are you saying that we shouldn't have the holiday tree then, Councilmember Bowman?
I guess so.
Okay, that's an interesting take. All right, Councilmember Little.
Yeah, I, I mean, we've had a Christmas tree, a holiday tree, and it's quite large with a star on top, and it's been, you know, welcomed by the people of Summit. It's a lovely tribute to the holiday season. It's been around for a very long time. I think most residents would be very disappointed to see it go. And in that same spirit, I think we should welcome other symbols of other faiths. I'm, I'm actually rather surprised that we haven't had menorah, another recognition. In that way, we have three synagogues in town, and I think it's entirely appropriate that, you know, near the, the other lovely celebration, we should celebrate the other festival of lights and, and do that and, and have the menorah. I have no problem with that at all. I think it's entirely appropriate.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. Any other comments? Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. I, I agree with virtually every point that's been made so far. I think, you know, it's very easy to think hypothetically about what, what requests we could potentially get, but we have this one now and we've, and we've done, we have the history of what we've done in Summit so far. The way that I'm thinking about it, which is just slightly different than what's been mentioned so far, is that I, I want to just reiterate that there's not going to be any city funds or city personnel that are going to be used in the, in the process of putting up this demonstration.
Okay, Counts, are there any other comments? Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. I, I actually want to weigh in similar to Councilmember Little in that I welcome the request for the menorah and really wish we could expand it in this particular climate that we're in, when there is so much inability to see other people. If there were a way that we could expand this request, and I don't know how atheists express their celebration or their dissatisfaction with it, but I wish we could expand the request that Iris has made.
Councilmember Naidoo.
Can I just point out to everyone, just so everyone understands, there's been Supreme Court cases associated with it that govern how and what the city can and cannot permit, and what is acceptable and non-acceptable symbols and so forth. And so we're all working within confines of what is permissible and what is in front of us today as a resolution is consistent with that. Other towns have done this also consistent with that. And just so it's clear, it doesn't necessarily mean equal height, equal size. It means that it is in the same close proximity with each other. So it's not all spread out all over town. It is in close proximity with each other, and there must be a secular message. And our message that we were planning on putting up was something to the effect of have a healthy and happy holiday season. Maybe that addresses Councilwoman Hairston's point about, you know, non-believers having a message also just that's not, it's a secular message, it's not specific to any religion or even a belief in religion or God or anything like that. And so we have a, a basic framework that, that we have to work within. It's, it's clear and we are going to do it within those confines. Thank you.
Mayor Regis, did you have a comment?
Just briefly, I, you know, I know what you're saying, Councilman Bowman, but, but it's just for a short period of time and it does celebrate, it does respect the, the beliefs and the celebration of so many different people in our community. And as for expanding it, I wouldn't want to see the city expand this on our own. I think it's important for organ groups who might want to be represented to take it upon themselves, to talk about what they want to do and come to us. I prefer a bottom-up, you know, sort of more organic approach. And that may happen, you know, I mean, we have to be prepared for it. And I think, and there have been requests for this for many years. And Councilman Naidoo is correct, the law is, is on the side of allowing this type of access. So I, I think it's something, this time has come. So I'm, I'm very happy that we're looking at it and I hope you guys pass it.
Thank you, Mayor. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Members of the Public if anyone has anything. Okay, we've got Rabbi Avi Friedman, go ahead, Rabbi.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Council President Fox, and thank you, Members of the Council, for entertaining this, this project. So I would just like to state, since we've all alluded to the established law in this country, so actually, let me just take a step back. I'm here, first of all, as a citizen of Summit. I live at 34 Hartley Road. I'm also the Rabbi of Congregation Or Shalom, one of the three congregations petitioning for this menorah. And also as a past president of the Summit Interfaith Council, and the Interfaith Council is also co-sponsoring this. So the Supreme Court case, which actually came from Pittsburgh, the majority opinion was written by Justice Harry Blackmun. And he wrote that government may celebrate Christmas in some manner and form, but not in a way that endorses Christian doctrine. And that's why a Christmas tree is permitted, but a kresh is not. And he then went on to write that both Christmas and Hanukkah are part of the same winter holiday season, which has attained a secular status in our society. And so we, again, as I think was stated earlier, just want to show the community, remind the community that there are multiple celebrations going on this time of year, not just one, which is represented by the Christmas tree. And I would also just, taking a step over to the side now, putting on my rabbi hat as opposed to my US citizen hat, and say that the story of Hanukkah is one of religious freedom. And so putting up the light of the menorah in the dark days of winter is a reminder that this country has always celebrated religious freedom and we, the Jewish residents, citizens of Summit, appreciate that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much, Rabbi. Can you just repeat, I, I know there's a lighting date, can you tell us what that date is?
Yes, it is Sunday, December 13th. Let me just make sure that is correct. Yes, at 5:30 PM.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from Members of the public? Well, thank you to Rabbi Friedman for, for elucidating the, the issue, the constitutional issues and, and giving us some context. I'm very, I, I'm very excited that we finally are having a menorah here in, in Summit, and I look forward to the lighting ceremony. And, oh, did you have a comment, Councilmember Hairston, or is your hand just up from before? Just hand up from before? Okay. All right, so if there are no other comments, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so motion carries, moving on to Administrative Policies, number two.
Okay, last Administrative Policy, a relatively simple one. As we all know, we've been operating remotely and will be continuing to do so for the near future. Initially, we did so under the Governor's Emergency Order. However, now, the, the State's Department of Community Services has issued rules as to the, having remote council meetings. And so we are essentially reissuing our existing rules so that we are consistent with the State's DCS rules. One things that folks should recognize or know is, as Rosie previously said, if you want to make comments, you can do so by email, as long as it comes in by noon of the council meeting date. And if you send identical comments, that is like essentially, it's a form comment that other people have sent, then it is permissible for the acknowledgement that there was an additional comment, or more than additional comments, I guess, on the same topic, but the clerk will have to read out each email that has the same exact comment. And it'll be noted for the record. But otherwise, with that, it's essentially the same rules we're all operating under right now, and I introduce this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from Members of Council? Any comments from Members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so we're now on to seven finance resolutions, Councilmember Little.
Not me, Council President.
Sorry, Councilmember Vartan, right?
That's okay. On this episode of the Finance Committee Podcast, I'll take you through.
Usually when it's, it's Councilmember Little with caps.
Okay, Resolution number one, this is Resolution ID number 7500, and it authorizes the transfer of funds from accounts with a surplus to those with insufficient funds. Part of this adjustment is due to, is to correct clerical error. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from Members of Council? Comments from Members of the public? Okay, this one requires a roll call vote. Go ahead, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye. Okay, motion carries, moving on to Finance, number two.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution is ID number 7501, and it establishes the 2020 salaries for City Hall staff. These salaries include a 2% cost of living increase for all non-union staff members. At the beginning of the public health crisis, the Finance Committee in this council decided to postpone the decision about whether to fund these cost of living adjustments. We wanted to wait until later in the year to have a better understanding of our financial situation. Thanks to the ingenuity and hard work of our Finance Department, especially Tammy Baldwin and the Chief of Police, Andy Bartolati, the city received considerable CARES Act funding to offset expenses, and we are on track to spend less than budgeted. These increases are included in the city's 2020 operating budget. There are 35 full-time and 10 part-time employees who are eligible, and the total amount of this adjustment is $80,000. The Teamsters, police, and fire unions have all pre-negotiated contracts for their members with increases included. The people receiving these cost of living adjustments are not represented by a collective bargaining unit. Most importantly, through this entire health crisis, there has been no interruption in government service. The people who work for the City of Summit are deserving of our thanks and this salary adjustment. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from Members of Council? Councilmember Hairston.
So, Council President, I was concerned that I didn't see every member of staff on here, and there was a clarification that was made by Administrator Rogers that I think would be helpful if he would just explain that for the public's benefit.
Go ahead.
Yep, to, to answer that question, Councilwoman Hairston had mentioned, dealing with the non-unions, what you see on this resolution are those who are at top step of their grade. So there are others that are non-union that are still in the steps. So you would see that reflected in the budget and would have seen that in prior resolutions that were either adopted January 1st or July 1st, when we typically deal with the step increases. So this is just dealing with those who are at top step and would be eligible for a cost of living adjustment.
So just to clarify, a step that has to do with, it's a performance-based measure?
Correct, correct.
Thank you. All right, thank you for that clarification. Are there any other comments from Members of Council? Okay, comments from Members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to Finance, number three.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution is ID number 7497, and it authorizes a contract with the accounting firm of Wilcox and Company, LLC, to be the city's auditor for 2021. The amount of the contract is not to exceed $67,200, and the auditor is doing an excellent job for the city, and we look forward to working with them again next year. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from Members of Council? Any comments from Members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, moving on to Finance, number four.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution is ID number 7496, and it authorizes a contract with the law firm of Hawkins, Delafield, and Wood to be, to be the city's bond counsel for 2021. The amount of the contract is not to exceed $60,000, and this is the city's current bond counsel. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from Members of Council? Any Members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution is ID number 7493, and it authorizes a contract with Unitemp Incorporated out of Somerville for the city's on-call HVAC maintenance and repair services for 2021. The amount of the contract is not to exceed $65,000. Ordinarily, this type of resolution might come from the Capital Projects and Community Services Committee. However, since it's a citywide contract that has to do with other departments, it is coming from the Finance Committee. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from Members of Council? Any comments from Members of the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number six, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution is ID number 7492, and it authorizes a contract with Summit Industrial Hardware, Inc. for the city's walk-in hardware supplies. This is the city's current vendor, is located within the City of Summit, and the amount of this contract is not to exceed $60,000. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from Members of Council? Comments from Members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, last Finance Resolution, Councilmember Vartan.
First there, thank you, Council President. This resolution is ID number 7499, and it declares a vacancy for a full-time account clerk in the finance office. This is an essential cross-functional position responsible for many tasks, including processing accounts payable. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from Members of Council? Any comments from Members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, we're on to Law and Labor, Councilmember Bowman. We've got three resolutions.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Resolution number one, Law and Labor number one, Resolution 7525, is to approve the 2021 council meeting schedule. As the year 2020 comes to a close, councils establishing the 2021 schedule follows the traditional first and third Tuesday rule, with a couple of exceptions being February 17th due to President's Day, September 1st due to Labor Day, and November 3rd due, due to being Election Day. Those all will be on Wednesdays. As per prior years, August has no meetings scheduled, although we can add if necessary. I move this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from Members of Council? Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, law and labor number two, Councilmember Bowman?
Law and Labor number two, resolution number 7533, is authorize an extension of the current 2020 sidewalk café permits. That is, we're extending it to one year. We had a ordinance that was in, that we approved October 6, 20-322, which extended sidewalk term to one year. This resolution extends the 2020 permits by three months through February 28, 2021. I move this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead, Councilmember Bowman.
Building on the last resolution, resolution number 7526, is authorize the extension of liquor license agreements for the sidewalk. Since we just approved resolution 7533, we can extend a resolution for our restaurants to have sidewalk sales of liquor on the sidewalks through February 28. Let's hope we have a warm winter. So basically, what we're doing is extending it through February 28. There will be no additional fees charged to those establishments. I move this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're on to community programs and parking services. Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 7478, to authorize the submission of a recreation opportunities for individuals with disabilities Roid grant application for 2020 and 2021. There is a possible amount of $18,000 in grant money available from the New Jersey Department of Community Fairs, which would fund recreational activities for individuals with special needs and other program-related expenses for October 1, 2020, through June 30, 2021. This grant would require a 20% local match, which will be covered by registration fees, and so, in other words, no taxpayer money. This grant money, plus the registration fees from Summit and 13 other municipalities, provides the funding support for the special needs program within DCP, known as TRICAM. Since 2010, the city has received almost $170,000 in state grants that has allowed TRICAM to become an award-winning regional program. This grant money has allowed our DCP and TRICAM to continue to expand their program offerings even among 19- to 21-year-olds who have previously aged out of the program. Kudos to Director Ozaroski and his team at DCP. TRICAM has been a shining example of sharing services. Besides Summit, 13 other municipalities are part of the TRICAM collaboration, allowing neighboring towns to market and publicize the program as their own, but then send their residents here. TRICAM has been recognized by our own community, too. Last year, the city was awarded a grant by the Junior League of Summit to convert an unused office into a sensory-friendly room for individuals with disabilities. I could go on and on about TRICAM, but I will only mention one more thing. Most of the peer mentors that make the program go are our own high school and middle school students who volunteer their time and talent. The students are invaluable in providing a peer-to-peer experience for these special needs children. The relationships and deep friendships formed are life-changing. And with that, I move this resolution.
I second.
Any comments from members of council? Councilmember Little?
I just want to echo some of Councilmember O'Sullivan's comments. The TRICAM program has been such a huge benefit for the city of Summit in so many different ways, both for the children who attend the programs, the children and young adults who work as mentors in the program, the, you know, all the people involved. It's just been such a win. So we are, we are very lucky to have this program in our community. It's a real jewel, and thank you to Mark and his staffer continuing to support this program. It's, it's a, it's one of those win-win across the board things that we're very proud and lucky to have here in Summit.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. That's absolutely right. I agree heartily with everything you said. Any other comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, go ahead, Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 7437, to authorize the contract termination effective December 31, 2020, for the Broad Street East Valet Parking Concession. The city of Summit has suspended its contract with Parking Services Plus three times this year for their valet service in the Broad Street Garage. And now, with at least 30 days' notice, we are canceling our contract with Parking Services Plus as of December 31, 2020. Many commuters are still working from home, and demand for commuter parking is minimal. Therefore, there is no need to continue the contract at this time. With the cancellation of this contract, the expense will not be included in the 2021 parking utility budget. If a valet service is needed in the future, the city will go out to bid. I move this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And one last, community programs and parking services.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 7523, to authorize temporary use of Broad, of the Broad Street East lot for CrossFit Veracity. CrossFit Veracity has submitted an application for the temporary use of a section of the Broad Street East lot for outdoor classes. CrossFit Veracity has provided all of their insurance paperwork and certifications. Their temporary use of the parking lot will not extend beyond June 19, 2021, and may be terminated earlier at the discretion of the city. CrossFit Veracity must be ADA compliant and follow all federal, state, and local orders regarding the coronavirus pandemic, including, but not limited to, social distancing and the wearing of masks. And I move this resolution.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're on to Capital Projects and Community Services. Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Council President. And I only have five tonight, so I'm not even winning. So thank you, Councilmember Vartan, for beating me tonight. The Cap Projects Resolution Number One is to authorize expenditure from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for rehabilitation of affordable housing units at Glenwood Place. And this resolution is for reimbursements of costs for the replacement of deteriorated staircases at the Glenwood Place development. This is a partial payment of an allocation that was already approved by the common council and will be paid through the, from the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And part of that trust fund, the, are monies that are set aside for rehabilitation of affordable properties, so that is coming from that portion of the fund. And I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Little, cap number two, please?
Capital Projects Number Two is resolution number 7504, and is to adopt the city's traffic calming guidelines. And over the last few years, the Engineering Division and the Police Department have received an increase in requests for traffic calming measures, and we've approved a number of these, such as four-way stop signs and the speed humps and different things. And the success of these measures has meant that the requests have increased from the public. So the Department of Community Services has been, and the Engineering Division have been working on creating traffic calming guidelines to assist in the process of selecting appropriate measures and define a means for residents to request these measures and provide guidance to the city. So these have been developed, and I ask that we approve them tonight, this resolution.
Second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we're on to Capital Projects Number Three.
Thank you. Capital Projects Number Three is resolution number 7393, and this is to award bid for the 2021, 2022 onsite vegetative waste grinding services. And this is a slight increase from the amount that we have proposed in the past, because we did have to raise the amount twice in the past year due to the increased storms. This is a new vendor for us, but comes highly recommended, and the amount is to not exceed $85,000 for the year, but will only be billed out as needed. And I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second it.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Capital Projects Number Four. Councilmember Little?
Capital Projects Number Four is number 7463, and it's to authorize negotiated contracts for 2020, 2021 snow and ice removal services from sidewalks and open spaces, not to exceed $25,000 for next year. And this is a negotiated contract because no bids were received for this. So a contract was negotiated with Sheppi, with Adam Sheppi-Lanescaping, who has provided this service for the city in the past and has familiarity with DBW and has done a very nice job for us in the past, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second it.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, our last Capital Projects Resolution. Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Council President. The last Capital Projects Resolution is number 7498, and it's to declare a vacancy for a per diem sanitation worker. We have an opening for one of our sanitation workers. It's obviously an essential service, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so now we're moving on to the consent agenda, which is generally considered as, and voted upon as a whole unless anyone from the council or the public has anything they'd like to pull out and discuss separately. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Still moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we're on to council members' comments and new business. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to say? Councilmember Naidoo?
Thank you, Council President. Since I missed the last meeting, I'm sure you missed hearing my voice. So I wanted to just say something, which is about the election. So while there are a few remaining ballots still to be counted, I want to take this opportunity to thank those individuals who ran for local office this year, Marjorie Fox, Susan Hairston, and Eileen Kelly. This is a volunteer position, and that takes a toll on one's family, and one's actions and words are subject to scrutiny all the time. There's no patronage jobs associated with it, nor are there any hidden perks, or at least I haven't found them in the five years I've served on council. So the only reason someone should run for this office is the belief that one's contribution can improve the community. In short, to make a difference, to do good. This year's Ward One race was highly competitive and hard-fought. By the next council meeting, we will definitively know who has won, and we will all heartily congratulate the winner, and we will have a person who has to have conceded the race. This is how it should be, since the people will have spoken, and in a democracy, those who run for office have to abide by their decision. But now, when this election has been over, or is over, we need to come together and work for the best of all residents. We have many challenges coming for the rest of this year and for the next year. So let me again thank you all for being willing to go ahead and tackle those challenges and for running for local office. The community is grateful to all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Naidoo. Are there any other comments from members of council? Councilmember Little?
That was very well said, and I agree with the sentiments completely. I wanted to just follow up. I know we talked a lot about the rising COVID cases at the beginning of the meeting, and I just wanted to draw the public's attention, or those that are still watching, to the return of college students this week that are going to be coming home for Thanksgiving. And the city put out a very, they linked to an article today with some guidelines, and I would encourage everyone to watch it and to think carefully about how to bring your college students home safely. There's going to be, you know, a lot of, a lot of students traveling and coming into our community, and with the rise of COVID, I just wanted to alert everyone to take extra precautions and maybe check out the resources that the city published today.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Have a good night, everyone. Be well.
Good night.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.